All right, we ready to go, Ms. Janis? All right, perfect. Good morning. Welcome to the Rankin County Board of Supervisors, March 5th meeting. We'd like to call this meeting to order at this time and ask Mr. Slay if you wouldn't mind to lead us in the invocation to start this morning on.
Thank you for the season here. Thank you for the reality, Lord, that we are approaching the celebration of your death, burial, and resurrection. And all of that means I just praise you for making the way for us to be rightly related to you once again. You didn't leave us in that condition, but you raised us up so that we might serve our fellow man and do so effectively. Thank you, Lord, for the skills and the gifts and the abilities that you've given these men here. Father, everyone in the room, I pray, Father, that we would be united in our purpose to serve our fellow man with the gifts you've given us. Help us to do that, Lord, without any sort of idea that we would be repaid. Father, help us to do that freely and abundantly, the way that you gave to us for all these things in Jesus' name.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Slay. Item number three on our agenda is going to be public comments and recognition, and we'll start with the recognition of the Florence Lady Eagles Soccer Team. Mr. Slay, I believe you've got a resolution for these girls, don't you?
This is exciting, and it's something that has been becoming a frequent reoccurrence for us. It seems like that end of the county is racking up the hardware on us and bringing teams in, and it's just a real privilege for us to be able to recognize and to congratulate the Florence High School Lady Eagle Soccer Team on their 2018 MHSAA Class 4A State Championship. I'm going to read this resolution, and ladies, at some point here, you will hear your name called. I hope it's pronounced correctly when you hear it, and I want you to come forward when you hear your name called, okay? And don't hesitate. Just come on right when I say it, even if I say it wrong.
Whereas the Florence High School... Okay, thank you. Whereas the Florence High School Lady Eagles won the 2018 Mississippi High School Athletic Association Class 4A Soccer State Championship by defeating West Lauderdale in the third overtime period of a thrilling 3-2 final game. And whereas this talented group of athletes competed at the highest level in a total team effort that resulted in a season record of 24-3 with 18 shutouts and a 19-game winning streak, they had an impressive 105 goals scored on the season. And here are the members of the team: Macy Spencer, Casey Hickman, Hayden Sullivan, Grace Giglio, Hannah Heron, Sammy Steen, Jordan Patrick, Caitlin Hubbard, Taylor Ford, Allison Goza, Michaela Morrison, Taylor McBey, Addison Jordan, Jesse Heflin, Matty Cox, Olivia Burnham, Sadie Woods, Morgan Phillips, Madison Carroll, Madeline Edwards, Shaylen Quick, Megan Sims, Christina Guzman, Angel Evans, Addie Grace Barnard, Riley Neely, and Carly Woods. The team managers, I don't know if they're here with us today, are Greg Stahl and Jaden Bell, and the student athletic trainer is Jesse Broadwater. I'm glad they're all up here now because this part of the resolution is probably, guys, something that we're most proud of for our athletes because they're both involved athletically and they're involved academically as well. So whereas the most impressive statistic compiled by the Florence High School Lady Eagle Soccer Team is the overall team GPA, which stands at 3.67. Congratulations on that, girls.
Thank the coach and all of them.
Yes, sir. Fixing to get them right now. Florence High School Soccer coaching staff is under the direction of Coach Bill Hood. Coach, come forward. And Assistant Coach Josh Kavanaugh. I think it's interesting that those roles are reversed for the boys' team. They share these responsibilities, so congratulations to the coaches. Principal Tony Martin and the administration of Florence High School are to be commended for their outstanding commitment to both academic and athletic success. Therefore, ladies, it's resolved by the Board of Supervisors that we commend and congratulate the members of the Florence High School Soccer Team, the coaching staff, and the administrative leadership of Florence for their championship 2018 season. And on behalf of the citizens of Rankin County, we extend our heartfelt wishes for continued success on and off the soccer field. And this is resolved today, March 5th, 2018, as signed by all the supervisors and our chancery clerk. Congratulations on your success.
Hey, one thing, Josh, where you get that picture? John, Judy, and Sheriff, y'all want to come up here also?
Y'all don't need me in a picture.
Okay, y'all are good, okay.
I'll mess it up. Judy and Brian can get up there.
Hey, and while you go, tell them, let's see, we did this, what again? We did this back-to-back in 2012 and '13.
I ain't getting up there.
We had a little lull there, and now we're back again, but the boys filled in the slot. So, and I tell you, it says a lot for the youth program, too, that brings these young men and women up to this point. Y'all have done a great job.
Excellent.
And Josh, you've got a little history with Florence yourself with some soccer.
Seventh one he's been involved in?
Huh?
It's the seventh one he's been involved in.
Yeah.
Seventh state championship.
Wow.
All the boys from Florence.
What you need to do?
Short girls in the front, medium-sized girls in the second row, tall girls in the back.
We got a bunch of tall girls.
Chuck, it's all names right. The names are all in order.
And also, they're all coming back except two.
Really?
Yeah.
So we expect to see y'all here next year, too?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I told them no pressure on them.
Yeah, I think it should be noted, Sheriff, helping the parking lot, too.
Deal.
That helps. Yeah. Yeah. Good luck. Good journey. Sonny's proud of y'all.
Thank you. Congratulations.
All right, keep it up, keep it up.
Congratulations.
Keep it round. Got the winning technique here. Yeah. Hey, you know, Bill Kavanaugh.
Is Brandon in here right now?
Coming at 10.
Oh, at 10. So we need to wait for them?
Yeah.
Before y'all go to the bus, hang on one second. I gotta do something as a favor.
Good for you, boss.
Absolutely perfect. Janis would've had it a little more.
Yeah, it's not quite centered at the clock.
It's not quite the Janis moving that podium, but...
Not quite with the clock. Centered at the clock.
That's all right.
But I was a little off-center of the wheels. Wheels don't really quite...
Straighten him out, will you? It's perfect, Ms. Janis. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Father.
All right, moving along in public comments and recognition. Mr. Franco, JH Nation, tough act to follow after all this...
These hands have found us were 20% under budget on both projects.
It's going to be good news all the way around.
Well, actually, on misdemeanor, we're more than that, but that's...
Because we can't make it work.
Let me first say, I always appreciate being at the front of the program, but I seem to get put behind all the great achievements, and so I cannot live up to what...
Look, and you're right in between now because we've got another group coming in behind you.
I know, and I appreciate that I'm not having to follow that group, too. But anyhow, what I wanted to do this morning, it's been a little while since the last time I was here, and I just really wanted to give you an update on how we're proceeding on various projects. Beginning with the misdemeanor, we started construction about six weeks ago, and of course, it's been raining every day since, just about, but they are making progress on the dirt work. And one thing that really helped is when the board decided to go forward early on last year, we could get some of that other dirt there. Otherwise, we'd be stuck right now. But anyhow, they're approximately, I think they've got their second pay-up in, they're approximately 9% complete to this date. The pay-up they have in now is approximately $130,000, leaving $3.4 million is balance. They're scheduled to be through right now in March of 2019, and everything so far is going good. One of the unique things about that project is because there's so much fill on that site, they're having to let it settle before they can move forward for a while and monitor that and then make sure it's done. On the courthouse, you can certainly see the steel going up, and again, they've been hammered by the rain, but they've been working when they can. They're approximately 28% through with a balance of about $13.5 million left. They're also scheduled to be through by March 19, and originally, they were going to be through by January, but the rain since beginning of the year just really slowed them down a lot. Regarding the courthouse, we have been meeting on the furniture and the high-density shelving, and we've got all that finished. We've met with Laura and Bridget, and we're getting ready to meet one more time just to finalize that, but that will be being purchased off of the state contract. What we'll have left to do on that still to do is audiovisual landscaping, so we're working on those right now. And I'll go over where we're at cost-wise and everything. We will be coming to you with a change order on that project, probably next month. It will be a deductive change order, so there'll be some additional savings there. We're working on that as several components, and we'll be bringing that to you. We're also working, have met with the sheriff and his staff on canine shelter for his dogs, which will be located adjacent to the outbuilding for the misdemeanor. Sheriff, we actually have a plan that we need to come meet a few long short, and I'll set up some dates for that. And then the last thing we're working on is the renovation of the chancery, and we're scheduled to meet with the users on that as that moves forward. So where we're at, actually, financially, cost-wise, as far as our projections, we're still on schedule with the budget. The courthouse, as you may remember, was with VEI, was roughly $18.4 million. The misdemeanor was $3,798,000, which was about $1 million under what was previously budgeted. The furnishings and the shelving for the courthouse is about $1.2 million, which is almost exactly where we had budgeted on that. The audiovisual for the courthouse and the landscaping, we've got budgeted $250,000. We're hoping that's going to be less than that when we get ready to do that. You may remember, we're waiting on doing that as a separate item. We think we can get a better price, but we will start in the next few months of getting that finalized and having that bid as a separate item. Landscaping, we still have a budget of $100,000, and you may remember, we took that out to save some money, too. And then the last thing is cabling, phone, camera access control, and those are pretty expensive for both buildings. That's somewhere around $350,000 to $400,000 is what's budgeted, and we're getting ready to work on that. But right now, if you add all that up, where we're at is about $24.1 million for all those projects, and we still have in the budget, not that we haven't used any, is a contingency fund for both projects of $175,000, which is not used, comes back to the county. So that's where we're at on these projects. I would like to come before you periodically and give you an update if you have any questions, and I'll, if you have any questions right now about things.
Where are we at in the timeline on what we originally thought completion?
We're about two months behind, Jay, and that really is, we both really thought January is not 2019, and right now, they're looking at March of 2019, and just if we can get the courthouse, you know, they're still having a little problem with one part of the slab, but they've obviously been able to erect steel. The misdemeanor is totally depending on the weather right now, and we just need some drying time with it.
Yeah. The weather's February and almost in history.
Yeah.
Like two inches breaking 1896 record, I think. Crazy.
Every time they move dirt, it rains, so then they have to dry it out again, and it's just unfortunate, but reality.
Well, thank you very much for your update.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right, the only thing we had on the public comments recognition was the Brandon Lady Soccer Team. We'll wait that off, delay that back just a little bit. So item four is old business. Motion by Mr. Morrison to approve, second by Mr. Morrow. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with a like sign. Item five is consent agenda.
Submove.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? Any further discussion that sees none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, with a like sign. Mr. Sullivan, good morning.
Good morning.
Item number seven. No boots today?
No boots today.
It's one of those Mondays, isn't it?
Well, I just wear them during the rain.
I understand.
You know what I mean? Just so I don't get my feet wet. They're plastic.
I like it.
So I don't want petition to change the assessment on 2017 real and personal property assessment.
Submove.
All right, so we've got a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? Any further discussion that sees none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, with a like sign. Mr. Sullivan, broke my concentration. Sorry about that.
Yeah, right.
Kind of get a little flow going sometimes.
I don't think you got it right yet this morning.
It's just one of those days. The Brandon Soccer Team beating Northwest is still bothering me. That's at the top of my page, and my eyes keep drifting back up.
And we're going to remind you of that again in about 45 minutes.
I gotta get...
Don't see it changing anytime soon either.
Once I scroll that up off my page, I should be okay, but I mean, it just keeps drawing me back in there. Make a smaller font for that. All right, item B.
Authority to publish the homestead exemption public. Just pick who you want.
Okay, so let's just go with Mr. Morrow this time, and second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with a like sign. All done? Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Item eight. Ms. Heron, good morning.
I'm arrested for knocking him out. I'm going to get up here.
I don't think the sheriff would arrest you on that, would he? I think the sheriff would let that one go, Ms. Heron, I believe.
You'd probably get an standing ovation.
Good morning. My first item this morning is I'm requesting approval of a vending contract with Coons Distributors for one year. This is a renewal.
All right, so a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrow. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with a like sign. Item A is approved. Item B, Ms. Heron.
Second item is I'm requesting approval of copier contracts with Rico. There's three, for the sheriff's department jail, two for youth court, one for IT, and one for extension services.
All right, so a motion by Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with a like sign. Item B passes. Thank you, Ms. Heron.
Thank you.
Done a little bit better.
Wake up, Bridget.
Mr. Harrison.
BC 2.
We're at item nine. Good morning.
I'm BC 1.
I'd like the motion approved. Word to change within accomplished.
All right, so a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrow. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with a like sign. So item A passes. Item B, Mr. Harrison.
Request approval utility permit AT&amp;T construct fiber optic cable utility along and across Algonquin subdivision, River Chase subdivision, to be installed between Old Fane Road and Barnett being one.
And a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrow. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with a like sign. So item C passes. Item D.
Request approval of atmos energy to construct two HFE gas mains with service utility along and across Audubon Point subdivision to install between March and August. That's finishing up in there where we're at.
Okay.
They'll do some changing around in there.
Y'all get it worked out on the casings and stuff like that.
I think everybody's in agreement on how that's to be handled.
Okay. All right, so a motion by myself to approve, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with a like sign. Item E.
Request approval of atmos energy to construct two HFE gas mains with service utility along and across Audubon Point subdivision to install between March and August. That's finishing up in there where we're at.
Okay.
They'll do some changing around in there.
Y'all get it worked out on the casings and stuff like that.
I think everybody's in agreement on how that's to be handled.
Okay. All right, so a motion by myself to approve, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with a like sign. Item E passes. Thank you, Mr. Harrison.
I got it. I think everybody's in agreement on how that's to be handled.
All right, so a motion by myself to approve, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with a like sign. Item E passes. Item E.
Request approval of atmos energy to construct two HFE gas mains with service utility along and across Audubon Point subdivision to install between March and August. That's finishing up in there where we're at.
Okay.
They'll do some changing around in there.
Y'all get it worked out on the casings and stuff like that.
I think everybody's in agreement on how that's to be handled.
Okay. All right, so a motion by myself to approve, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with a like sign. Item E passes. Thank you, Mr. Harrison.
I got it. I think everybody's in agreement on how that's to be handled.
Mike, hang on, Mike, hold on one second.
Hey, I just wanted to bring your attention and your staff. We currently have a lot of people in the neighborhoods now doing utility work.
Yes.
And it's wet, and we about to have others come right behind them, and I just want to make sure that we hold whoever accountable to repair whatever damage they do.
Yes.
And that was the same for Old Fane Road, too, because we've gone through a lot of problems in the past where nobody was taking ownership, where they're going and tore up places.
Yes, sir.
Let's just try to stay on top of it.
And if y'all hear of anything, let us know, because we do still have some utility people out there that don't come see us, so...
Well, we've had a rough time in Audubon Point with the original beginning of this construction, these gas lines putting in there. They started at the back of the subdivision, and it's been a nightmare back over there. There's some road damage that's actually occurred from that same side, so Mike's gone in there. So we think we've got it straight. What's happened a lot is they've been going to PRV to get their permits to get in over there and not notifying us. Now, I think we've got that corrected, Mike, to where we're getting involved in the process, but there's been a lot of subdivision work going on from Peel Hatchet Woods area, Spillway Road, other side, all PRV property that we never were aware of, so...
Well, I was, not as much the roads, just everyone's yards, and it was wet, and...
But everybody's posted. They posted sod and do everything back once they get through with construction, Jake, is what they tell me on the front. I mean, it's in their paperwork, so they're supposed to do all that. So I mean, feel free to call me and let me know if y'all see somebody, because some of them, they're not coming to get our utility permits, so we're not aware of them, so...
All right. Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Item 10, Mr. Parker.
Yes, sir.
Good morning.
Morning.
You ready to go today, I see?
Yes, sir. I was raring to go.
I like it. Here we go.
Three items. First two on subdivision in Mr. Gaines' district, and I recommend approval of preliminary plan on Freedom Ridge, Part 3.
All right, so a motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with a like sign.
Thank you. The next one is Freedom Ridge, Part 4, and I recommend approval of that preliminary plan.
All right, so a motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion?
Mr. Parker, I know that we've discussed it, but for Renee and you're not, it'll be the same provisions as we had on one and two as far as square footages and stuff like that.
That's correct.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with a like sign. Item B passes. Item C, Mr. Parker.
Thank you, and I'm going to let Allen Scott with our firm come and present this. He represents with the levee district and the process he needs to go through.
All right, thank you. Good morning, Al. How are you?
What is that about?
I'm here this morning representing the local levee district, Rankin Hines Pearl River Flood and Drainage Control District. You know, post Katrina, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers started instituting all kinds of things for the levee. One of the things they've been working on for the last four or five years is a nationwide program to try to increase the public awareness of risks associated with living or working in an area that's protected by a levee. About the last year, your local levee district, and of course, you guys have a seat on that board, has been working with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers in Vicksburg to come up with specific risk management and public awareness documents for the two levees along the Pearl River. The East Jackson Levee, which protects Rankin County and the cities in Rankin County, and then the Fairgrounds Levee, which protects in Hines County. Part of that process is they've, the Corps has asked that we come before the boards of those entities that are represented there and read a public statement into the minutes, and so I have that here this morning to do that, and then I will leave you a copy, and they've asked that this be made a part of the minutes for today's meeting, and that we will get a copy of the approved minutes after this, they're approved, and put them on file with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer in Vicksburg. So I'll just read this. "The East Jackson Levee System located within Rankin County, Mississippi, was federally constructed in 1968 along the left descending bank of the Pearl River and provides risk reduction to cities of Pearl, Flowood, and Richland. The levee system is approximately 13.5 feet tall and has an approximate length of 11.4 miles. The East Jackson Flood Control Project provides benefits to more than 10,000 people that work and live behind the levee with more than $972 million in land and property value. The primary flood risk concerns are based on local storm runoff, with flooding on the Pearl River being the main source. Minor seepage, water penetrating through or under the levee has been noted in isolated areas of the levees in the past, but none during the most significant high-water events. The levee routinely performs well during yearly flood events with no breaches, including the record flood event of 1979. The major performance risk identified with the levee is failure due to the seepage issues observed during historic flood events. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and the local levee district have a plan to address seepage issues as they occur, and past efforts to flood fight seepage issues have been successful. However, the presence of seepage issues can increase the risk of a levee failure. A levee failure due to seepage would occur suddenly, which reduces the time to warn people and evacuate the area. A reduction in warning time may increase the likelihood of property damage and human fatalities. The levied area lacks a flood warning system. The levee district maintains an emergency action plan that includes notification of Rankin County, Hines County, and affected municipalities' emergency operations centers. Flooding of the levied area would also result in significant property losses and economic damages. The following tables provide recommendations on how to improve on the potential risk drivers." I won't read the tables, but they'll be made part of the record. So we just need that approved, made as part of these minutes, and I will leave a copy of this, and then we can get a copy of those approved minutes after your next meeting.
Is that something they can say, we told you so, in the minute it happened?
Yes, sir. This is the same. The Corps can say that publicly, the public has been made aware that there are risks for living in an area protected by a levee.
All right, so the board wishes to entertain the motion for the acknowledgement of the receipt.
What do we, yeah, what do we do? Most approved. We acknowledged it.
Submove.
Need a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, with a like sign. Item C passes. Thank you, Mr. Parker and Allen.
It doesn't do anything but just let us know we noticed. That's it.
I make a motion to approve A and B under Mr. Slay's agenda.
All right, so under item 11, under Mr. Slay, A and B is a motion by Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with a like sign. Item passes, so A and B, the public hearings are set.
On the discussion side, Mr. Slay, this is not going to affect anything we're worried about as far as the assessment that's going on for Mill Creek's drainage right now.
Anything, it will assist in getting areas opened up that would nobody be business with.
Okay. All in favor say aye. Any opposed with the light signs. Item D passes. Item E?
Restful of atmos energy to construct two HFE gas mains with service utility along and across Audubon points of division to install between March and August. That's finishing up in there where they have. They'll do some changing around, isn't it?
Y'all get it worked out on the casings and stuff like that.
I think everybody's in agreement on how that's to be handled.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, so a motion by myself to approve.
Aye.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed with the light sign. Item E passes. Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Yes, sir.
Mike, hang on, Mike, hold on one second. Mr. Bishop's got something for you.
Hey, I just wanted to bring your attention and your staff, because you currently have a lot of people in the neighborhoods now doing utility work.
Yes.
And it's wet. We about to have others come right behind them. And I just want to make sure that we hold whoever accountable to repair whatever damage they do. And that was the same for Old Fanny Road too, because we've gone through a lot of problems in the past where nobody wants to take ownership, where they're going and tore up places.
Yes, sir.
So, let's just try to stay on top of it.
And if y'all hear of anything, let us know, because we do still have some utility people out there that don't come see us, so.
Well, we've had a rough time in Audubon Point with the original beginning of this construction, these gas lines putting in there. They started at the back of the subdivision. And it's been a nightmare back over there. There's some road damage that's actually occurred from that same side. So, Mike's gone in there. So, we think we've got it straight. What's happened a lot is, they've been going to PRV to get their permits, to get in over there to do it, and not notifying us. Now, I think we've got that corrected, Mike, to where we're getting involved in the process.
I think we've got that corrected.
But, there's been a lot of subdivision works going on from Peel Hatchet Woods area, Spillway Road, other side, all PRV property that we never were aware of, so.
Well, I was, not as much as the roads, just everyone's yards, and it was wet, and it was all settled.
But everybody's posted. They posted sod and do everything back once they get through with construction, Jake. It's what they tell me on the front, MS in their paperwork, so they're supposed to do all that. So, I mean, feel free to call me and let me know if y'all see somebody, because some of them, they're not coming to get our utility permit, so we're not aware of them, so.
Alright. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Item 10. Mr. Parker.
Yes, sir.
Good morning.
Morning.
You ready to go today, I see?
Yes, sir. I was raring to go.
I like it. Here we go.
Three items. First two on subdivision in Mr. Gaines' district, and I recommend approval of preliminary plan on Freedom Ridge, Part 3.
So moved.
Alright, so a motion by Mr. Gaines.
Aye.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed with the light sign.
Thank you. The next one is Freedom Ridge, Part 4. I'm recommending approval of that preliminary plan.
So moved.
Alright, so a motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion?
Mr. Parker, I know that we've discussed it, but for Renee and you're not, it'll be the same provisions as we had on 1 and 2, as far as square footages and stuff like that.
That's correct.
Okay.
Any more discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed with the light signs. Item B passes. Item C, Mr. Parker.
Thank you, and I'm gonna let Allen Scott with our firm come and present this. He represents us with the levee district and the process he needs to go through.
Alright. Thank you. Good morning, Al. How are you?
Yeah, what is that about?
I'm here this morning representing the local levee district, Rankin Hines Pearl River Flood and Drainage Control District. You know, post Katrina, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers has started instituting all kinds of things for the levee. One of the things they've been working on for the last four or five years is a nationwide program to try to increase the public awareness of risks associated with living or working in an area that's protected by a levee. About the last year, your local levee district, and of course, you guys have a seat on that, on that board, has been working with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers in Vicksburg to come up with specific risk management and public awareness documents for the two levees along the Pearl River. The East Jackson Levee, which protects Rankin County and the cities in Rankin County, and then the Fairgrounds Levee, which protects in Hines County. Part of that process is they've, the Corps has asked that we come before these, the boards of those entities that are represented there and read a public statement into the minutes. And so, I have that here this morning to do that, and then I will leave you a copy. And they've asked that this be made a part of the minutes for today's meeting, and that we will get a copy of the approved minutes after this, they're approved, and put them on file with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer in Vicksburg. So, I'll just read this. The East Jackson Levee System located within Rankin County, Mississippi, was federally constructed in 1968 along the left descending bank of the Pearl River and provides risk reduction to cities of Pearl, Flowood, and Richland. The levee system is approximately 13.5 feet tall and has an approximate length of 11.4 miles. The East Jackson Flood Control Project provides benefits to more than 10,000 people that work and live behind the levee with more than $972 million in land and property value. The primary flood risk concerns are based on local storm runoff, with flooding on the Pearl River being the main source. Minor seepage, water penetrating through or under the levee has been noted in isolated areas of the levees in the past, but none during the most significant high-water events. The levee routinely performs well during yearly flood events with no breaches, including the record flood event of 1979. The major performance risk identified with the levee is failure due to the seepage issues observed during historic flood events. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and the local levee district have a plan to address seepage issues as they occur, and past efforts to flood fight seepage issues have been successful. However, the presence of seepage issues can increase the risk of a levee failure. A levee failure due to seepage would occur suddenly, which reduces the time to warn people and evacuate the area. A reduction in warning time may increase the likelihood of property damage and human fatalities. The levied area lacks a flood warning system. The levee district maintains an emergency action plan that includes notification of Rankin County, Hines County, and affected municipalities' emergency operations centers. Flooding of the levied area would also result in significant property losses and economic damages. The following tables provide recommendations on how to improve on the potential risk drivers. I won't read the tables, but they'll be made part of the record. So, we just need that approved, made as part of these minutes, and I will leave a copy of this, and then we can get a copy of those approved minutes after your next meeting.
Is that something they can say, we told you so, in the minute it happened?
Yes, sir. This is the same. The Corps can say that they, that publicly, the public has been made aware that there are risks for living in an area protected by a levee.
Alright, so, Board wishes to entertain a motion for the acknowledgement of the receipt.
What do, yeah, what do we do? Most approved. We acknowledged it.
And made orders for move.
Need a motion by Mr. Morrow?
Aye.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed with the light signs. Item C passes. Thank you, Mr. Parker and Al.
It doesn't do anything, but just let us know. We know. That's it.
Alright.
Make a motion to approve A and B under Mr. Slay's agenda.
Alright, so under item 11, under Mr. Slay, A and B is a motion by Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed with the light sign. Item passes. So, A and B, the public hearings are set. So, item C, Mr. Slay.
Yes, this is a site plan architectural review for Freedom's Image LLC, Donald Lane, District 4. This is a continuation meeting, so we'll reopen that public meeting, public hearing. Freedom Image LLC is proposing to construct a 6,250-square-foot metal building at 216 Donald Lane. Donald Lane is a private road on the east side of Highway 25. This property is 3.53 acres, zoned C2. The applicant does not have a tenant at the current time. The site plan shows a 12-foot crushed asphalt drive, along with a future drive expansion of 12 feet if the building is leased out. It also shows a future concrete parking area. There are seven concrete spaces shown on the south side of the building. So, at this time, I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak on the matter of the architectural view or site plan for this particular matter. Is there anyone here to speak on that? Y'all are in favor. Hang on. Anyone to speak in opposition on that? I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition. Obviously, the applicant is here for any questions that you may have, and it'd be appropriate to ask them to step forward this time if you do have questions. Steve.
Yeah. So, the other day, when we brought this up, I'm really not in favor of us doing any more crushed limestone. I mean, it's time for us to do asphalt, and not only that, brick the building rather than a bunch of metal buildings.
Hey, good morning. If you would, just introduce yourself for the record.
I'm Michael Brooks. My address is 336 Stump Ridge Road.
Okay.
So, me and my wife, we're Freedom's Image LLC. So, we're developers. We develop and are still developing Freedom Ridge subdivision out on Stump Ridge Road. You know, we definitely don't want to make any kind of eyesore to Highway 25 or any of the Pisgah area. You know, we care about our kids. Go to Pisgah. We want to input into the area. So, we don't want to make any kind of eyesore. You know, we, from day one of deciding to put a building up there, we knew that we wanted it to look nice. We wanted to do certain types of landscaping. You know, I walked right over to the neighbor's house and told Mr. Donald, I said, "Mr. Donald, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to impose on any of your privacy. I don't, I don't want you, you know, to have to worry about that." And he said, "I don't think you'll bother me." I said, "Well, I'm gonna put a fence up." So, we're gonna put a nice, good neighbor fence up. You know, we've got some landscaping ideas I think that'll look real nice. We can put some wrought iron type of, you know, black wrought iron type of fence up across the front side. As far as driveway goes, you know, we basically, this is gonna be Freedom's Image is office right now, so it's not necessarily for a tenant today. You know, we just, we needed to get a spot for us to land and do some operating of our own, but with the, you know, with the thought of renting it out one day, or, you know, or leasing it out or whatever. So, we, you know, we drew the site plan up to make sure we had all the room for the driveways and the parking and the handicaps and all those types of things. We made the space available to do those types of things. We just, personally, we just don't need all those parking spots for right now, just for us to get in there and operate on what we're doing. So, but we, like I said, we drew it out, so we could have that.
Just so I understand, when it was presented, it was for a tenant, possible tenant to be there, but what you're saying is, you are the tenant?
As of right now.
Okay, but if you were to leave and then have someone else occupy your space, we won't ever have that opportunity again to have you come in and address what needs to be addressed, such as the parking lot.
Right.
You know, but now, if you're looking to expand, you know, on back further or any other buildings you may build, you know, we would have opportunity then to have you do something. But, if you leave your location, if we give approval as you want today, and if you leave out and then give it to someone else, we'll never know that. Am I correct, Renee?
I think we kind of figured out a way to.
There is a tenant completion permit that's required if you do lease it out and you have to make changes inside there. You've got all your [inaudible] and stuff like that. Yes, you're required to [inaudible].
Yeah.
Can I ask a couple, I'm sorry, a couple clarified questions that may help us a little bit up here. I mean, I think the reglos to Mr. Brooks, we okay with that?
Yes.
So, the owner of the property now, is that in LLC or is that your?
It's in an LLC.
It's in the LLC.
Yes.
So, Freedom.
Freedom's Image LLC.
Alright, so it helps the property.
Yes.
And so, there will be a tenant potentially on the front end, maybe for tax purposes, something like that? Is that what the thinking is?
Well, possibly.
Why you're gonna occupy?
Yes.
Okay. My thought process was, if there, if it's just simply a paperwork deal where the tenant is actually still them, they'll have to work out how that ownership is handled in order to get the tax benefits of that. Obviously, if the same property hand or leasing it, it's not separate entities, there won't be any tax benefits to that transaction. So, they'll have to work that out with CPA. But, my thought would be, we could approve this as long as it's an intra-family corporation situation, but the minute that it becomes a third-party tenant, he would have to, at that point, he would have to asphalt the drive, or whatever else y'all are wanting done.
I mean, I think we are gonna have to go at least a portion of the way up with brick and have a entrance coming from the front that you can see from 25, a door, a front, because the way that this, I looked at it in, you know, his plans and stuff, the way that the entrance really is gonna be for him, as it is shop, and when I say shop, store, tractor, store, stuff he has to have for, you know, doing small development. This, they've got the Freedom Ridge, which is at Stump Ridge Road, and they're, they've sold and fixing to start building some houses on a few lots that face the county road. They haven't done anything as far as new roads or small subways. But, he has some equipment and things that are scattered around that he'd like to be parking. That's why it's a 6,000-square-foot building, he tells me. And, and he could have an office there, but his work is not like a dentist office where people are gonna be coming in. I mean, when he goes to work, he's gonna meet somebody out there at the lot nine times out of 10. Now, they might come there to sign a paper or something. But, but I still think that we should have a building that is appealing. It's not on 25. It's a private road that runs parallel, and it's almost the last exit in Rankin County, but like Bob said, it's gonna be there. I would like about, I don't know, however much it's skirting or brick in the front. He's gonna do a private fence that really will block most of the view, and it's not just the minimum that we have. That's a six-foot. They're gonna do an eight-foot.
Then he say it's gonna be wrought iron?
Then he's gonna do a wrought iron fence in the front.
I got.
Which would face 25, and in some landscaping, bushes and stuff. Those things, I think, are immediate, because whether anybody's in there or not, you still, that's what you see from 25. The asphalt parking lot, I join you with what you said. I think if there's a mechanism that we could trigger before it's rented to have the parking lots either concrete or asphalt, I know he's already gonna have a couple of concrete pads. I I.
Well, it's gonna be out, how close does it come to the road? And the reason I mentioned that, is you know how we have problems with gravel getting in roads, and then we get complaints about that?
Well, it is a gravel road. The private road that goes to the man. And he, he's got an option or bought some lands that are joined this, and he knows, I mean, we've already discussed it, before he goes any further, he's gonna have to enhance that private. I mean, once it goes commercial, he's gonna have to make it a commercial road. And, but there's a couple of residents that live there, and then there's another commercial property at the end, Ambiance Landscaping, which is, I mean, this guy's building is gonna look like Taj Mahal besides that. I mean, I, I hope that the Board could live with that and what I said, if we have a trigger mechanism that before it becomes commercial outside of him.
If you like it, I'm good with it.
As long as they have a.
If you like it.
Maybe a trick, sir. Again, this is something that we, that's just an option the Board can select. I, my thought process is, make your triggering mechanism whenever it gets, whenever there's the potential that it will be leased to a third party. That's gonna be hard to lease, but that could be a trigger mechanism. Do a hard and fast, say it's approved, but within two years from the date of its approval, it has to be asphalt.
I, I think if there's a way that we can, and once you change power over, we will know. But, once you get a third-party tenant, we'll want you to come in and finish the parking lot. And it would help, though, most of the time, when we do these site plan reviews, it helps you have some images, you know, what the building was gonna look like. But, Steve has met with, and he's real confident in what y'all bring on.
I've teed on him on that.
Biggest thing I want, biggest thing my comment was, was, 25 is gonna be the next big, major corridor development wise. And I made a suggestion back a year or so, that we get an architect on board on a contract basis to help review, and kind of help set a tone for commercial development. I realize some areas don't really need it as much, but I think if we're not careful, we're gonna have to cut out the bag on 25 before we realize it, and then we can't put it back in. So, Renee, I, you know, strongly suggest that we try to pull in somebody to kind of help us, because it's gonna continue to go. I mean, there's nothing gonna stop 25 from developing up. It's a great location, you know, poor lane, and, you know, so, but that's just, not about here, but I'm happy with what y'all want to do.
We'd like for the minutes to reflect, you know, apparently you understand about what we're trying to do. So, if the minutes need to reflect that, at the point in time that a third-party tenant comes in, if that's what, that's the triggering mechanism, we just need to make sure that's accurately reflected in the file. Is that where we are?
Yes.
Anything else for Michael?
I don't. We need to entertain a motion, I guess.
Motion. I make a motion. We accept it.
Subject to the condition that at the point in time that the owner of the property leases the facility or the property to a third-party tenant, that will be the triggering mechanism for the entry drive and the parking lot to be completed, and those will be asphalt surfaces or concrete surfaces as shown on the plan.
With the facade is.
And y'all just keep electing me, and I'll check on it.
Alright, so a motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed with the light sign. So, item C passes.
Gentlemen, if I may, we've got our acquisition agents, Mr. Turner, Mr. Thompson are here. I'm gonna ask them to come forward.
I make a motion and add this item to the agenda.
Thank you.
Motion added by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrow. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed with the light sign. We have added them to the agenda once again.
It's Gunner Road and Andrew Chapel, right?
No.
How are y'all?
Good, good morning.
Good, good. Good morning.
We're on Andrew Chapel again. I like it. Here we go.
No, no, I'm sorry, Andrew Station. Andrew Chapel's, we're working on title for Chapel.
Did you already vote to put them on the agenda?
Anybody want some coffee?
We all waiting on it.
We got the plate, the plate right there.
We've got, we've got our first round of title in. We're, we're still working on title.
How many further we have on Gunner Road?
We got a ways to go.
It's a lot of darn houses.
It's a lot of houses.
You can't leave it at one time.
Oh, yeah. Well, oh, yeah, we're working, we're working on, we've got three projects right now going for the county.
Historically, they are way ahead of where we are on projects of this scale.
Roughly, we're, we're about a third of the way through acquisitions on Gunter, where we actually have signed deeds for the right-of-way necessary, and.
There are 93 of those, by the way.
This is a, this is another round of pay packs where we're paid to land them.
I make the motion to approve.
Alright, so a motion to approve by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Gaines.
What are we approving? What, they've got, they hadn't shown us yet?
Yeah.
No, no, no.
I wanna see what they got.
Yeah, no.
It won't take but a minute.
George, Bob.
Coming from you, I am shocked. You're the one who wants to combine four items together. That's good.
We spend your money, that, on setting public hearings, that's spend money.
Yeah.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, me looking at it, it's not gonna change anything.
Yeah. Always does tell me who it is.
The damages are those landscaping?
Okay, Lester Purser is all land. It's a.
I'm just worried about Mr. Sims.
Yes, Mr. Sims. Mr. Sims' property lies right along the, adjacent to the railroad track. He's got a wood fence in place now that runs along the length of his property and several large trees within the take area. We're gonna repay him to rebuild his wood fence and pay him some landscaping damages. The fence damages came out to about $6,100, and we got a, we got an estimate from Jeffco Fence, and we backed that up with some Marshall and Swift data. The Nancy Phillips track has a heavy wooded barrier, boundary, along her property line adjacent to the railroad track. We're gonna take that barrier out. We're gonna replace that barrier with a wooden fence that runs along the length of her property, and we're, and we're gonna extend the fence down the back of her site, because she's losing that, that sound and view barrier between her and the railroad track. So, those damages are included for those two tracks. Those are two, the two large damages. For the Laughlin Homestead, the $500 is for timber. They've just got about 10 large oak trees in his take area.
What's to approve?
Second.
Hang on a second. I thought we're, let me go back, 'cause I know I'm having kind of a shoddy day myself, but don't we have a motion by Mr. Bishop and a second by Mr. Gaines? We're still in discussion, right? So.
I guess so, yeah.
Alright, say that for a little more time. Alright, so again, a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed with the light sign. Mr. Bob's trying to throw me a curveball over there a little bit.
Afterward, sometime, you give me a call. I'd just like to run.
You have something else?
Yes.
What do you have now?
Now we have the couple of Gunter.
That's what we just did.
That was Andrew.
Do we need to, we need to add them to the agenda as well?
I'd say Jay and Andrew.
Jay added both of them. Okay.
Little Road. Air Gas, that's the Air Gas Project, alright. That's one. We tore it up.
These are just additional establishments of just compensation for properties along Gunter Road. The large, the largest acquisition here is the Daystar Baptist Church property. There's a large commercial sign in front. We received an estimate from A+ Sign to replace the sign for $9,828. So, the total for that take is $11,373.
Alright, so a motion by Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed with the light sign. So, the, it says Gunner Road Project is approved.
We're almost completely done with just valuation.
Okay.
We have more to last.
Alright, is that it?
I still need to talk to you.
Yeah, great.
We'll hang around.
Alright, thanks, guys. I appreciate you.
Thank you, guys.
Alright, Mr. Slay, is that it for you?
It is, thank you.
Okay, item 12, Ms. Oster.
Thank you. I only have one item this morning, and that's authority to purchase two 2015 used Chevrolet Tahos from the Missouri Highway Patrol, and that's $21,000 each, and authority to send three deputies to travel and pick them up and pay any travel-related expenses.
Okay. And motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed with the light signs. Item 12 passes. Anything else additional business?
Yes, Ms. Oster, can I talk to Ms. Oster?
Yes, I do. I was asked to bring up, we had talked some time back about a deputy for the annex building, and I have a note here that, for us to revisit it today.
Okay.
Really?
Alright.
Sheriff, we're, and I know, kind of, can't do metal detector, right? That was out of the question, right? Now, Mr. Slay, that's not an option for us?
Deputy for the annex.
It's gonna be the sheriff's call whether or not he can do that, and then you guys will have to.
Live with it.
Hear from the sheriff as to whether or not an additional, an increase in his budget is in the offer to do it.
I was there, but I guess it's a piece of, I'm coming, metal detector, just a deputy.
I was curious, I think we talked metal detector about, I think we decided that's a little practical with the number of people coming in and out.
I think we're asking for a lawsuit if we're putting metal detector there.
Concealed here.
Yeah, 'cause there's no, there's no restriction on this bill.
Yeah, 'cause they can carry weapons.
This is not a courthouse.
Right.
So, bad move, in my opinion.
Yeah, if we did the metal detector, we'd still have to have men operating it, so.
Still have somebody there.
Yeah.
I think we talked to maybe about two part-time deputies, maybe retired deputies, maybe.
If I find two part-time people to make that one-time position, yeah, I mean, definitely an increase in my budget.
Jessica, what's your thoughts over there on the Chancery side of everything, security-wise? Did Larry have any thoughts or ideas on that?
I think he thought we needed security. I don't know about
Because of the large flow of money. Because of the money and stuff like that, so.
To me, it was, it was Larry, John's office and Judy's office, all concerned.
Because of the amount of money.
That's happened a lot of times, like Judy's had some pretty serious incidents that hurt. One domestic deal, uh, then several people just getting mad at him when they go in there and, and have to, you know, have to pay the guards bill and they can't get tagged and they start going off on him, you know?
I usually handle those problems.
And then of course, we got John over here.
That's right.
Well, we got Janus.
Janus could actually be the security person.
I think so, I think so.
I think, I think we need to go ahead and move and put something in place and see if it works or, and make some adjustments down there. Try starting off with two, two part-time deputies, we can kinda avoid the, the, you gotta handle it.
And it, I mean, we could start out like part-time because our busy time's gonna be December, January and the Chancery clerk's gonna be August on the redemption. That's when the majority of the large flow of money comes in and then tags at the end of the month or beginning of the month.
I think it's about go ahead and try and plan for one all the time. I mean
Yeah, I think you put one over here that everybody's gonna expect it, like five months in private.
All right, so, Ms. Laura, what do you need from us on that? Need a motion to do that or?
I'll make that motion.
So you got a motion by?
One plus to that would be, um,
Most ads.
Somebody comes over and they have to do an affidavit for lost, over tag, they have to come over to the sheriff's office. Whoever I have over here, I can let them just do the affidavit, see if they can step back out to the desk, do an affidavit, walk right back in and it'll be better customer service for the people coming in.
You got some little furniture or something somebody can use to set up?
I'll find something, yeah.
All right, so
I make the motion, that's the
I think Bob already did, right? All right, so a motion by Bob, second by Mr. Morrison, adding it to the agenda. Any further discussion?
I'm starting to pay attention.
All I think, well, I'm just, I'm picking up slowly. I'm a slow learner, firemen are slow learners. You gotta figure that part out. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed with the light sign? So motion approved by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Morrison. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed with the light sign? Your mic work?
Yes, make that motion to
I abstain.
So we got an extension from Mr. Bishop. All right, anything else, uh, under additional business, Ms. Oster? I think that wraps up the meeting.
Are they, I was gonna say, should they?
Is that today? I'm just kinda catching up slowly.
This thing does not really wanna go where you want it to go.
It doesn't, it doesn't.
You seem to be doing a good job.
That worked out pretty well. Come on in ladies with a smile.
Come in, come in.
Smile.
One to two to one, yeah, something like that. Girls wanted, both of them wanted.
Boys, I like, I'm a perfect record, didn't it?
I don't remember. All right. We got everybody inside?
Still flowing in? You can just line up down behind them. Sir? Bring them on up here. They, they come on down behind Chuck. It's enough room when they come down behind Chuck, you chuck it. Ain't enough room behind y'all if they need to line up? No, against the wall, no, against the wall.
All right, we got everybody, Mr. Slay?
I think so, I think so.
Tell them step on down.
If we don't have everybody, we don't have room for anybody else.
Okay, perfect. All right, so, uh, we're gonna work our way back up to the public comments and recognition side of this and we're gonna recognize the Brandon Lady Bulldog soccer team and it's kinda with a little bit of sadness in my heart, we recognize you guys. I'm a Northwest Rankin guy, so, uh,
We're proud of you. Don't worry about that.
There we go. There's a little bit of personal thing between me and Bob going back and forth up over here between Northwest and Brandon, so I just bow my head and allow this to happen, so, uh, Mr. Morrow, a few words?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanna congratulate you ladies on a job well done. Uh, y'all worked hard, you have represented Rankin County well and we're very proud that y'all are a part of the team here, uh, coaches as well. And a big thanks to the parents. It could not happen without y'all's support and getting them there and, and encouraging them and, and being part of, of the process and we're very proud to be honoring you guys here today. Uh, and it couldn't be any sweeter that Mr. Da- uh, Mr. President here has to eat on it a little while here for the next few minutes. Uh, my next objective is to take on Pearl, so as soon as we wrap that up, you know, uh, we'll have it a, a good deal. But I think Mr. Slay's got a few words he'd like to share there, but
Absolutely. With your indulgence, Mr. President, I'll, uh, we have a resolution for this special group of athletes here and it's a real privilege for us to be able to recognize and to honor you ladies on your accomplishments. So I have a resolution here that I'm gonna read and I'm gonna try my best not to butcher any names. I wanna apologize in advance if I mispronounce your name. So if I get close enough that you recognize that I'm trying to pronounce your name, I want you to come forward when you hear it, okay? Even if I don't pronounce it correctly, you come forward. So I'm gonna call each of you individually, uh, to come forward. Uh, Mr. President, with your indulgence, whereas the Brandon High School Lady Bulldogs won the 2018 Mississippi High School Athletic Association Class 6A Stalker State Championship by defeating the Northwest Rankin Lady Cougars. And I, I just wanted to emphasize that for some reason.
You see how they keep turning the knife in you over here, it just never stops?
In a thrilling one to nothing championship game. And whereas this talented group of athletes competed at the highest level in a total team effort that resulted in a season record of 18 wins, two losses and three ties. And here are the members of the team. Ladies, when you hear your name called, come forward. Cavani Bolton, Abby Cannon, Caribeth Carter. Ladies, if you'll just line up as best you can here, we're gonna probably end, end up having to make three rows, okay? So just line up for me here. Michaela Coleman's, Brianna Cooper, Emily Easterling, Mallory Ellis, Zoe Ellis, Amelia Fox, Carly Giles, Taylor Glasgow, Caroline Griffith, Sarah Hansen, Tori Harvey, Caroline Hayman, Jocelyn Jones, Kennedy Jordan, Mallory Keagle. Did I get that close? Julia Leach, Olivia McCarthy, Lauren McLamore, Callie Minshew, Erin Mansour, Brooklyn Maudy, Hannah Pitts, Bailey Raffelt, Savannah Robbins, Abby Roberts, Hallie Steed, Sadie Stocks, Jordan Sullivan, Connor Lee Tigrid, Stella Vincent, Isabella Bolts, Collins Warren, Mackenzie Parker. Get everybody?
They got one more back there.
Do we? Hey, come forward, please. Tell me your name. Okay, did I just not call you Hannah? I must have missed you. I apologize. But see, you got singled out and got special recognition because I failed to get your name on the, on the list properly. Whereas the Brandon High School Soccer Coaching Staff is under the direction of Coach Jeremy Short. Coach, if you'll come forward, please. And Assistant Coaches Camille Dumas and Josh Furby.
I'm gonna do a kneel down to get all y'all's faces in there. Chuck, you want to kinda?
Hey, I think, uh,
You wanna kneel down or something?
Hey Craig, what about their athletic director?
Yeah, I, I, I tried to get Coach to come, he didn't come up.
Craig, Craig, does that come with a check? I noticed a lot of these girls had ripped pants in I think a check comes
Yeah, we're gonna take up a donation, Steve.
They've been praying for this victory. Hey, y'all, y'all doing good, good girls.
Guys, let, let me finish out the resolution here. The administration of Brandon High School is to be commended for their outstanding commitment to both academic and athletic success. Therefore, it's resolved by the Board of Supervisors for Rankin County that you are commended and congratulated on your outstanding victory in the 2018 season. On behalf of all citizens of Rankin County, we extend our heartfelt wishes for continued success on and off the soccer field. This is resolved the fifth day of March of 2018. The, uh, resolution signed by each of the supervisors and by our Chancery clerk. We wanna say to you girls, congratulations on your outstanding victory and we are really, really proud of you. We really are.
Great job, great job.
Thank you ladies, appreciate it.
Thank y'all very much. See y'all next year. Cut Northwest a little slack, Lee. Just try to cut Northwest a little slack if you can.
Yeah. Y'all come back next year. Thank y'all. Thank you.
How'd we lose her? How'd we lose her? We gotta pay more money over there, I guess. I understand, I understand.
Can't beat 'em, just bomb.
Bomb. I'm glad y'all don't hate the chairs anyway. I like them a lot.
You're pretty impressive, you got, you got four friends and, and Northwest.
What is it?
Yeah, these are comfortable.
Appreciate it, Tyler. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Slay, uh, do we have need for executive session?
Yes, sir, we do have personnel matter.
Make a motion to have a discussion about the need for, uh, uh, executive session.
Okay, so a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed with the light sign. So, executive session is
Personnel and litigation and litigation.
Personnel, okay.
We do need to get those, uh, ordinances from Ridgeland and Madison.
I make a motion going to executive session for personnel reasons.
All right, so a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed with the light sign. So executive session, Mr. Slay. Okay. All right. I think we've arrived.
We already did.